I just started recording. A normal work session, so I just figured I'd record it, but if you guys want to livestream, tell me and I'd be more than happy to.
I don't think that's necessary unless other people disagree.
Perfect. I don't either.
All right, then for this work session, this is March fifteenth. And this is a work session, we can continue our conversation regarding staffing needs. We had last in our last one, we had fleshed out what we felt the responsibilities for a planning zoning clerk and a clerk of council would be. We still had to flesh out what we believe the responsibility of a code enforcement officer is. That was the last stage before we went to mesh it all together to, to, you know, look at what it would look like on a, on a set of bodies, right? How we would organize those responsibilities into, I don't know, what I would call an FTE or a, you know, a, a full-time or a part-time person. Do we want to do that? Or I think at the last council meeting, somebody had brought up another item that they had wanted to discuss in a work session. But I didn't, I didn't note what that was. I just remember that that was something that came up. Did anybody recall what that was?
I don't, I don't remember one way or the other.
All right, well, then, as far as I'm concerned, we can go on and talk about a code enforcement officer. And what we believe those responsibilities would be. Right, a. Hold on a second here, let me start picking.
Isn't there a job description already for the code enforcement officer?
Yes.
Probably. So if you, if you happen to have that handy, that might be a good place for this discussion to start.
I, I don't have it handy.
Let me see if I, I'm not, yeah, I would keep talking because I am not even logged in, so it's gonna, but yes, we have everybody's job descriptions in a file.
Right. All right. So here, so I want to, I start the discussion, right? So I would, I would say that I would expect one of the duties to be regular. Visual inspection of the village for, in residential and commercial areas. Right, I would say that following up on planning and zoning permits for compliance. Right, and that would be both during the, during the project and after the project.
Well, aren't we starting to get overlap into what we had described as the?
No, I, I believe, so this is what I'm talking about is.
Terminating process was that.
Right, I'm talking about in the field, so I wouldn't expect the planning and zoning clerk to go into the field, right? So part of, part of a regular complaint is that we hear is people don't think that we have anybody that goes out and eyeballs the post holes for fences, right? I would expect that that is a job for a planning and, or a code enforcement officer.
The onsite inspections?
Right. That's what I'm suggesting. Right, and then lastly, I would think that. I don't know how I want to say it just yet, but something along the lines, you know, that they would be responsible for. Code enforcement violation citations and follow-up. Code violation, what do we, are those citations when we have a code violation? I don't even know what they're called.
I, I don't know. Well, my, yeah.
Violations, violations are fine.
Food violation. Write-ups and follow-up. Right, and those, those are what I would call, in my opinion, the three. The three chief duties of a code enforcement officer, right? But now, I think we've also had discussed visitation, not just inspection, but visitation of commercial areas. Right, where they are going and having conversation with the shop owners. Does anybody else have anything that they would want to add to that?
I would say that's part of your visual patrol and inspection of the village.
I think it's a subset, but I think that we would want to call it out specifically.
Yeah, just so they know that just driving by the place and saying, yep, everything looked fine is not enough.
Non-compliance warning letter. Joe, you got, you got non-compliance warning letters?
That's from Columbus.
You're on mute, Joe. Joe, were you trying to unmute so you could actually say something or? Still muted. We can't hear you, Joe. Not here, Joe, you are, you are muted.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. And so what were you saying?
I was saying, well, the way Columbus operates, they have code enforcement officers and then, you know, whether it's something they see in their routine travels or whether it's a complaint, they go out and then, you know, they issue a, a warning, citation, they followed up with a warning letter.
You got a citation and then a warning letter or a warning letter and then a citation?
Well, I have one, but I mean, that's what they do. They issue a citation on the spot.
Yeah, so, so.
It goes in the system and then they follow it up with a letter. And so then it's a compliance follow-up operation.
Okay. Fair enough, so that's how.
We might be able to simplify it or do it quicker than they do.
Well, I, I think that just noting that the expectation is that they are the ones responsible for writing up whatever violation citations and following up is enough. I don't know that, I expect us to write the process that they would follow, right? I, I don't think that's what we are doing right now, but if other people disagree, we can, we can talk about that.
Wow, that's a.
I was just showing an example. It is, it is the code enforcement officer that does that and they issue an order. I don't know if they call it a citation or an order, but then they do it by parcel number.
Okay. You have, you have a lot of, you have a lot going on on your face there, Tony. You're like, you have a lot to say. Now's, now's your chance.
My face is thinking out loud. You know, I think the, the job description for the code.
I like.
I'm glad you found it before me.
Well, you had sent it to us back in May, I think.
Okay.
I found it from a, any old email.
I did, May fourth?
Yeah, so May something, yeah.
Got it. I literally, it's upside down.
I apologize, but my internet just, just went wonky, so I did not hear what you were saying, Tony.
Well, I, I didn't say much because I was trying to listen to what you're wonky, what you were trying to say.
Yeah, I wasn't saying anything. I was, that was just me being quiet.
We all stopped to watch you go. It's like watching The Matrix.
Well, I, I think the, the code enforcement officer is pretty cut and dry. I mean, they're going to see the. You know, like you'd said, the follow-up, writing the citation, going out in the field and observing, I mean, the three things that you described, I think it's it in a nutshell. I know that in the past, I mean, code enforcement officers had to go to, you know, planning and zoning meetings and stuff like that. And I'm not looking for our code enforcement officer to do that, I don't think. And that's always been something, if there's something comes up that the code enforcement officer feels that, you know, the codes aren't, aren't adequate or there's some things lacking, maybe that could be put in as a description is, in their job description is, I don't know. Report inadequacies and code. Or however you wanted to.
Suggestion box.
Well, I mean, I think all, and that's one of those things that, you know, different code enforcement officers interpret things differently. You know, one person may not have a, one officer may not have a problem with the code and others may, so. I can't think of anything else, though, to include on their description. You're muted, Brian.
What I'm capturing from that is, what you're proposing is as a duty or responsibility that they would consult with planning and, the planning and zoning commission on the quality of existing code and potential gaps.
Yeah, there you go.
When, when needed, I think Tony said, whether we want to put that in there or not.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine that would be at their own discretion or at the request of planning and zoning, right? You don't, you don't consult on, yeah.
If someone has a concern.
Well, they're getting paid by the hour, they're gonna want to get paid to go to a meeting.
I don't know. Okay, so what other, does anyone else have any additional thoughts on planning or pardon me, code enforcement duties? Code enforcement officer duties?
I hope I, you know, I may have heard something incorrectly a minute ago, but. The code enforcement officers aren't really qualified to inspect, say, construction projects for compliance to specifications. That's a whole separate thing, just to make that clear.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta be certified by the state to do building inspections of any time.
Okay, so with, with that, so again, my thought was just on the permits that we issue. And I think the, the permits that we issue is like fence. Do we issue any other permits that we are the, because I don't think the, the county comes and inspects fences for us.
No, I mean, debts, debts or something and sheds get need permits. I'm not sure if those need inspections though.
Sheds over two hundred square feet are, are considered accessory structures that the, the county inspects.
But so the county inspect sheds over two hundred square feet and the county inspect stacks, right? If they're over.
County doesn't do debts.
Two hundred quarter feet, that's pretty big. Docks are done if they're attached to the structure. There's a, there's a distinction there.
Right, attached to the structure or over so many inches high, right?
Yeah, thirty or thirty-six inches tall, I believe, from the last time we talked about it. Correct.
Yeah. Right, so.
Can we go over that? It's two hundred square feet or more and it's attached or unattached?
So sheds are, are accessory structure that they are inspected, over two hundred square foot is required, okay? Building department. We inspect things, think of it as zoning inspection, so we simply make sure people put them in the right places per the code. A, they're allowed to have it. B, it's in the right place on the ground of the yard, right? It's not in the front yards, in the backyard, as an example. It's not too close to your neighbors, it's within the setbacks. It's typically what we are looking at from a zoning standpoint.
One unclear about one thing, two hundred square feet is pretty big.
Correct.
So there's no permit required for these smaller sheds?
No, no, they have to file permit. It's just whether or not the building department gets involved over two hundred square feet.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So back to the originally voiced concern. A code enforcement officer would be. Qualified to do the zoning, the kind of zoning inspection that we are talking about. Things are placed where they need to be placed and they have appropriate permission to build what they're building. Right?
I, yeah, I think so.
Right, so Joe is the one who voiced the concern. Joe, Joe, is your concern alleviated now that, now that we've clarified?
Well, I didn't have a concern. I did want the clarification because the, you know, construction inspection is a whole different matter.
Okay, that sounds like that has been handled. Anybody else have anything more to add to? To add to this list of duties? All right, well, that was pretty quick. So let's read those down again, and while I'm at it, I'll read down what we had for the planning and zoning clerk and the clerk of council. So we have for a code enforcement officer, regular visual inspection of residential and commercial areas. The code violation, write-ups and follow-up, visitation of commercial areas. Consult with planning and zoning on code quality and gaps. And then also, it was a field. Field review for and follow-up on the zoning. Permits. Right, so that was for the code enforcement officer. For a planning and zoning clerk. They are to coordinate the permit process. Answer questions in the office. Do administrative work for planning and zoning. Conduct offline research for planning and zoning and prepare minutes for planning and zoning. And then for a clerk of council. We, I had captured, prepare the council minutes, prepare legislation. And be available for offline research for council. So that was what we had captured in our conversations regarding those three roles. So now the, the next phase of this conversation, as I imagine it, is how do we see this fitting into? Into people, right? So we have responsibilities and we had started this conversation, but before we had duties, right? And before we were talking about, well, potentially a planning and zoning clerk and a code enforcement officer or one person or, you know, this could be three part-time people or, so my thought on this would be, I think, that a planning and zoning clerk and a clerk of council could be one person. Right, but that a code enforcement officer is a different set of skills and is a different person. So I, I think we're looking at adding two, two bodies to the village employee to be able to serve all of this need.
Although when you say that, it's really adding one body because traditionally we have a code.
True, true, yeah, we have a code enforcement officer.
It would be adding, adding one new position.
Right, or so, it feels to me like this is one full-time position or potentially two part-time, I guess is how I would roll that back a little bit.
Is Lisa just a part-time?
She's full-time.
She's full-time.
She is full-time. You have to have somebody in the office to answer the phone and the doors at least all day. So they're, yeah, and you can't expect the part-time mayor, and nobody is, but she's there because other than that, we would have a part-time office hours. So in order to have full-time office hours for people to come in for whatever their needs are, whether it be picking up something, dropping off something, whatever. And of course answering the phone, I mean. Yes, you have a full-time person that answers the phone, answers the door and does pretty much all of the other stuff at this time.
I have a question. If we combined these two roles and the clerk for the council was the same as the clerk for planning and zoning, one's in the chief executive branch of government, the other's in the legislative, so the question would be, who would be the person's boss? I would presume the mayor, but.
Well, I think the mayor is the boss of all the employees of the village, right? They, you know, their duties are their duties and I guess I would imagine the mayor would have the ability to set priorities for this person. But, you know, that's, that's how that would be. That's at least how I see it, right? He, no matter, no matter what, even if we had a standalone person, a separate body doing the clerk of council, they would still report to the mayor ultimately. So I don't know how that would change, I don't know how that would change the potential conflict.
Well, I don't know that'd be a conflict. It would be if people in the council, like us, started asking for things. Then it would be a question of what are they, what's incumbent on them to do?
Yeah, I, I think I would trust that people are grownups and if a person is being overloaded, they can express their concern, right? That's.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying that, you know, the employee might say, well, who do I, I'm being asked by five people to do something, what do I do?
Yeah, no, I, I also think that maybe that we might need to, you know, if that would become a problem, we might need to set procedures in place that those requests are funneled through the mayor, but she has a person to do the work. Right now, she doesn't necessarily have a person to do that work, right? The, the people that she has currently are already well-laden with duties and responsibilities.
I'm seeing the need. I am in agreement.
Well, it sounds to me like the debate, because I haven't heard when anybody else's, you know, feels about the skill sets, you know, not being compatible between the planning and zoning clerk and the code enforcement officer. I'd like to hear what the other members of the council think about, you know, I, I, I don't see why the, that there isn't a person that could do both of those jobs. I, I don't see the difference.
And I, I'm gonna.
I like to hear whatever, you know, I, I've heard Brian, I'd like to hear what other people have to say on that.
Please.
The only thing I was gonna say, Tony, is I think the, and, and maybe I took this wrong, but the comment is there's a different skill set, maybe, and, and I don't want to say, a code enforcement, a code enforcement officer makes pretty good money. I, I think on our payroll, they make, you know, in, in the real world, twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour, twenty-one dollars an hour, eighteen dollars, something around that range. So I think when you start talking about paying somebody an hour or two to write down meeting minutes, you're paying somebody twenty-two dollars an hour to write down meeting minutes. So I, and, so to me, it's more of a, to you guys, it may be a little bit different, but if we have them doing all of this. Little or things.
Get some back to, back to, are we talking about having two part-time employees, a, a part-time?
No, I think we're talking about if we don't. I mean, if, if you merged them together as one, you would be paying a code enforcement officer to do meeting minutes potentially and all of the above, and I'm, I think that would be the only comment that I would make is, you know. To me, whether we have one or two, the skill set is just a little bit, and I don't want to say different, it's just, yeah, you're gonna be paying somebody for meeting minutes.
Well, I, I would think that the clerk would, if we have a clerk, that that would take that on. And back to my example, here's one from the city of Columbus. So there's an order issued by the code enforcement officer.
Forms already, Joe, those are all.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about the, I'm just saying the procedure is that a code enforcement officer would write an order or citation, whatever it is you want to call it. But all these letters, these follow-up letters, the non-compliance stuff, would the code enforcement officer be doing their own non-compliance letters or would the clerk do that? That's my question.
That's why I think the comment that that position needs to be combined. I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, paying him.
It's just part of the job. No, I, yeah.
Minimum wage is gonna be fifteen bucks, I'm not sure.
No, no, again, Tony, I'm not in, I'm not in disagreement. I think that there's always gonna be things that you do in a job that you may not be, that you're paying somebody. I mean, it's just like our, the, the way it currently is. I mean, we pay our administrator X amount of dollars and there's some days that it's just minimal, so, you know, I'm not, I'm just pointing that out. I just think the skill set, you could. To do meeting minutes and things like that, you could literally hire somebody to do it and pay them twenty dollars per meeting or something along those lines is what was one of the conversations that you guys had before. So I think that's kind of where the conversation has gone, you know, this way, this way, this way. It's just a matter of.
This time about one thing, minutes of the meeting, which if, if that doesn't work.
Well, no, you've said legislation. No, he has also said legislation and, you know, the, the planning and zoning clerk is gonna do the agendas and they're gonna do different things like that. So again, it's just a matter of determining, is it going to be one person or two? And which way do you want to do it?
Right, so, so why don't we, unless, there. I think that since you, Mayor Hughes, would be the one ultimately, you know, responsible for these people's day-ins, day-outs and you've been a part of the conversation that we've dreamed up what we believe the duties are to get the duties for a, as we've described them, for a planning and zoning clerk and a clerk of council and a code enforcement officer, as we've described it in this conversation, what do you think the body count is that? What, what would you like to see and why?
Trust me, I, I can go back and forth, just like you guys are going to. I see the downfall to it being if one person's out, then that's gonna leave who to do it. Let's just assume they go on vacation for a week or they're out sick for two weeks. Now we're down a code enforcement officer, we're down a planning and zoning clerk, and how do you get caught back up when you're two weeks down? Now currently we are doing it, but again, as these permits and things like that start coming in in the spring, that's gonna be a little bit harder to catch up than it ever has been in the past. You guys have seen some of the Facebook complaints that we're already getting for, you know, it taking more than seven days to get a permit. So to go back to yours, having one person does make me a little nervous because if they don't last, finding a person that is. Yeah, I have had people prefer full-time, so it would be, I don't know that I would necessarily do exactly all of the things. For example, I do most of the legislation. Kim does her legislation. The only legislation that they would ever touch is your guys' legislation, something like, which most of those have to go through gene anyways, once you get done. But like, even the sidewalks, I mean, Eric pretty much does it, so I'm not sure, and I don't want to say I would trust this person to do legislation. I just think it's easier just to do it, because we, I, I don't know. I just feel like trying to track somebody down, that's why I was glad you were talking about a person inside the building versus like a independent contractor to do meeting minutes outside of the thing. Like, I don't think that, I, like, that was not what I envisioned. I don't envision trying to track somebody down that is not an actual in-house, in-person thing. A full-time person is gonna get benefits, so you've got to weigh that cost benefit to it. Having one versus two, having two people, again, I just feel like in this, in the situations that we have faced over the last year, two years, having one person out kills us, and when you've got. It's a matter, if, if we could have one full-time person that just showed up to work every day, that'd be great. But you can't guarantee that, or again, you don't know if they're gonna last three months or six months in code enforcement and code enforcement is killing us right now.
You know, what I'm hearing here is you got a choice between, do you want to worry about having someone there or having backup? Or do you want to be constantly looking for part-time employees? And that's to me, that's where the rubs at.
No, I think.
If you're having two part-time people that come and go, you know.
Again, I, I'm, no.
I, I don't know.
Tony, I think you're.
My take on this is that creating a full-time position would be more likely to keep somebody around.
And that's my hope.
That, well.
That was, Tony, I don't, I think you're missing what I'm trying to say. I think, and, and this isn't a topic for right now. This is gonna be a topic for later, but having one person full-time makes me nervous that if they leave, you're back in the same boat. At least you would have a backup person, but in the same sense, I do feel like you could potentially get some better quality people for a full-time job with benefits. So you're, I don't know that you're hearing it both ways. Two people's always better than one if one person's sick.
I am hearing it, that's I guess, and this is the rub. It's like, what do you want?
Yeah, which way do you go?
Yeah, for clarity's sake, when you say one person, are you saying packing all three of these sets of duties into one FTE? Okay.
Well, I would, I would say that, that Lisa start being the clerk of, or clerk of council.
Well, if, if the clerk were to do the follow-up, for example, when the code enforcement officer flags something or writes an order or citation, then it goes in the system. If the clerk were the one that does all the follow-up on the non-compliance, you know, mail, then the two jobs wouldn't be dependent on each other. then the two jobs wouldn't be dependent on each other. If, if you had a period of time in between code enforcement officers, the compliance part would still be operating, but it's kind of a clerk job to do all that paperwork, wouldn't you think?
Right. Yes, but also I think that the, the underarching or overarching or, I don't know, the, the thread that we have here is that one of the recurring issues that we have with retaining a code enforcement officer is as we have operated a code enforcement officer, and I think really as we've written these duties down today, there's not quite, and there's not enough work for a full-time position. Right? That's the, and so because we've run it as a part-time position, it is one that people don't stay at because, you know, they do this for a while and they find somewhere else that's a greener pasture with benefits or more money or what have you. So part of the idea would be if we could make it a full-time position, it might be more attractive and retain a qualified person longer. Right? That's, just to make sure that Tony understands, or not Tony, Joe was up on what was being said there.
Tony, and I would, I also would agree with her doing, Lisa doing, let me, administrative assistant doing clerk of council, she does ninety percent of that and she's confident and comfortable doing that. Um, so to me, that, that is the logical, you know, I think the only difficult part is of course the meeting minutes and it's just time consuming. But it is something to do in your downtime, when there's, when the phone's not really ringing that much and all of that. So it's not the end of the world. If, if we could get the.
That's why I'd say if you had, if Lisa was doing the clerk of council and then we had, you know, paid someone to do the minutes for Lisa's sake, you know. And that's why I think minutes for planning and zoning could be very simple.
I think that needs to be done.
The meeting.
I think that that needs to be done by either the chair, the co-chair, or one of the non-voting members.
Oh, right. That's, that's another thing that needs to be brought up at the next tomorrow night.
I do. I believe that that should be done by somebody there. They take five minutes.
Court reporters have an excellent skillset to take minutes.
Yeah, I, I used to do it in a PTA meeting. It's not difficult to do it while you're talking and you walk out the door and they're done. Um, so, but I, I agree with you. I think that Lisa needs to be clerk of council or I have no problem with her being clerk of council, but that means we've gotta get rid of the planning and zoning, clerk of planning and zoning, clerk of zoning, yeah, planning zone, whatever it's called. One's gotta go, one or the other. And I like the idea of her doing the council stuff.
Anybody else, you know, counsel?
Diane, uh, we haven't heard anything from you yet in this, uh, today. Anything to add?
Um.
I know you've got an opinion.
Oh, I always have an opinion. Always have an opinion. Um, although code enforcement is not something I, I know much about except from listening to you guys talk about it. But, um, I, I think that, uh, I still think it's a, a fine idea to have, take a little load off of. I just think in terms of doing the meeting minutes for the council meetings and then maybe doing a little go-for-a-work if, uh, research work. Or in the case of, of, uh, our council president, if he, uh, wanted to have, uh, this, uh, clerk of council summarize some of his notes for meetings like this, particularly where there's a follow-up and, and it would be nice to have them display, that'd be something else a person could do. But they would be a contract worker and they would have so many hours a month and like, like was originally described. So totally a separate thing. So I think that, I think that would be a, a backup person for, I think it would be a good person and the person then backs up. Uh, Lisa has a little bit less to worry about if another project comes down the pike and she gets, uh, overwhelmed. That's my opinion on that. It's not a big deal. I mean, Lisa can do it. I just, I just always thought it was a good idea. So that's one. And then number two on a code enforcement. And this is just, it's, it's a management thing. It's all, it's all, uh, your preferences and how you manage people, kinda people you like to work with and hire. It really is up to the, uh, it's really up to the, the mayor who happens to be the manager to do something which is most comfortable for her. But with me, I would look for a full-time person who is, um, doing administrative work in the office that's, uh, that's code-related, um, planning and zoning-related. And then I would, but I would have the, an internal administrative code enforcement manager type, or whatever you wanna call it. And that person actually would make sure it's all getting done. So instead of the mayor having to do that, the, the manager is, is making sure the permits are coming in, the answers are going out, the paperwork's, they may be doing it or they may be asking for help to do it with their swamp, but they're, they're the traffic cop in the whole process. And, um, where they can go out and inspect something, they do. But we would have additional people in the park, perhaps volunteers, uh, some of our residents who know construction, someone who maybe likes to inspect fences, someone who maybe likes to inspect that, that's wouldn't mind doing that as a, as a volunteer activity or for some nominal fee for inspection. Uh, she, he or she, the administrator, code enforcement, would call on them and say, hey, I got an inspection for you. Can you go see him in the next two days? And there'll be maybe four or five people in the village who would be delighted to share their expertise on a as-needed basis for some nominal fee or as a volunteer. And I would have, just have the manager manage those people who then would do a lot of the off-site work. And then as manager.
Something completely different here, Tony. It's what I'm taking from this is that you.
Yeah, I'm saying how, you asked me my opinion. That's how I would, if I was running it, that's how I do it.
Okay, maybe let me, let me, let me rephrase my question is that do you, or, and this goes to, to David and Mark that haven't chimed in yet and Joe even. Should we have two part-time people or, or combine the planning and zoning and the code?
I don't think, it doesn't matter. It's, it's all about what the manager wants to manage. And that manager, the person that does the hiring, the person that does the hiring, it has to have fifty-one percent of the vote on how this is done. You can't force, it's stupid to force, uh, you have to have a full-timer, you have to have two part-time people. That's foolish to enforce that on, on the person that's managing the hiring and firing. That person has to be able to, uh, uh, execute, uh, on this, get the people in, get people that are and, and, and so it, that, it's not, I don't wanna be the one to, one of the people to vote that, oh, you.
You have to abstain from this.
No, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with what the mayor wants to do. That's, I'm gonna vote the way the mayor feels most comfortable that she can actually execute on, on the job descriptions that have been put forth here.
All right. I have a question for the mayor.
Yes.
Uh, the minute an order or citations issued by a code enforcement officer at the immediately exposes the recipient to either civil or criminal prosecution. That's what the, Columbus puts in every one of their notices. Non-compliance may expose you to civil or civil or criminal prosecution. So there's a chain of custody whole thing in there. But the mayor handles traffic court all the time. So there may be, uh, do, do we have a separate clerk for, uh, court?
We, we have mayor's court and that will be Leah who manages that.
And that is for, it's not just for traffic. We do in fact bring in code enforcement violations to mayor's court. So I think the answer to your question is yes. We do bring them in.
So I'm just pointing that out.
So here's, here's how I'm gonna say this. Um, this topic was taken over by you guys to discuss. Um, and, and Diane, I appreciate that, cause I think at the end I kinda got what you were saying, that you would approve whatever I requested as far as full-time, part-time, all of that. Um, I don't know if everybody agrees with you, and I think that's the concern that I have is council, I don't get to fully make that decision. Um, council has to approve that decision. So if I request to have, and, and again, I appreciated the fact that you guys did do that for me for, um, our fiscal officer and um, the clerk of courts and doing some of the things that I wanted to do, cause I feel like it is working, it's working for me. And I love the way that all of that stuff is. Um, we are having a very difficult time finding somebody that is qualified to be a code enforcement officer. That has not changed as of today. We found a person that we believed that was really qualified, but honestly, she just turned down the job due to other circumstances. We do have another person that we are, that we have reached out to, um, that has, we have plenty of people that want the job, nobody that's qualified. And what I mean by qualified is has never done it before, um, has never, you know, potentially read a bunch of codes or, uh, nothing. I mean, it is going to be teaching basically me code enforcement. So, um, that's where we still are. We have, we have advertised the job. We have indebted it to death. We have reached out to other places, um, and, uh, so yes, we have people that are willing to try the job out. Um, but that's currently, we know that this is an issue that we've had in the past. I don't know if it's worth trying a full-time person. I guess we still two full-time or two part-time, one, one full-time, none of that matters. We can't find one person that's qualified to do this job that is willing to do this job yet. And we have been looking since October.
But it's been advertised as a part-time job.
Correct. No, absolutely. So if, you know, I think that is part of the problem. I don't think it's really a want. Uh, you know, in a perfect world, yeah, I could tell you what I want. I mean, but, because I do, here's how I'm gonna say this. You would have to, in order for me to think that we would merge, we would have to merge a part-time code enforcement with something in order to make it a full-time job. Because I don't believe there is enough work for them to do in October, November, December, when there are no permits, when there's none of that kinda stuff going on, there's no high grass, there's no nothing. Now, if you had them doing a lot of the zoning codes and working on some of that stuff in off-season, I would be totally for it. I think that a full-time person would be amazing. And I think we could potentially get some, some other people. Um, I, you know, again, I think benefits is, is, is one of those things that's gonna help pull in some people. But if you actually pull it up on a couple of different websites, I think a lot of people will be surprised at how much a good code enforcement officer costs.
If, um, if I may, I know I haven't been particularly vocal here. I, I am of the opinion largely of, um, council person shrimp that staffing is minimally our decision. But I would, I, I am in favor of the idea of a full-time code enforcement officer maybe drawing a higher, um, how do I say caliber of individual to the job, um. Um, however, I, 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 I would also be in support of the idea that, you know, what the day-to-day people need is what we should be giving them, cause they're the ones who are doing it. Um, none, none of us spend as much time at the building as, um, Mayor Hughes does. And what needs, you know, what needs are noted there should be obviously the primary consideration. Um, I, I would assume we could financially swing another full-time position, um, as we were discussing about twenty, twenty-five minutes ago. I guess hammering out what their specific role is would be the, the hard part to this point, but I, I don't know. Those are, those are my thoughts. This is not something that I will claim to have any expertise in, but there's that.
I, I would say one other thing, if Tiffany, if you, I haven't seen your ads, but, um, that's something that I have a lot of experience in is posting, posting ads and drawing people in that normally wouldn't be. If you wanna look at, if you want me to look at your ads to see if there's a way to phrase them so that you might get a person who's, uh, you could phrase it so that it seems like it's a full-time job, but it might be a part-time job. You might be able to get some more people fishing into your pond that way, if you, if you phrase it a little bit differently than just saying, oh, it's a part-time job. Or, you know, it's a full-time job. Because if you, if your problem is that the last three, those three months of the year, I mean, that there, there might be somebody out there, it, it, there could be someone out there that would, would be willing to, uh, furlough for those three months. There's somebody who might be willing to, uh, if you let them, if they were hourly, not salary, but, uh, if you let them float their hours along, uh, they basically are full-time. But I mean, there's, there's some, because frankly, there are some times of the year when they are really, really busy, like maybe the three months in the summer, for example. Um, so there might be someone that's willing to negotiate. If you say you're willing to negotiate hours, you know, uh, they might be willing to talk to you versus just skipping over your job altogether. So it's just.
I do. I feel like there's quite a bit of stuff that they could potentially do as long as everybody was okay with them doing, you know, again, we have how many permit issues that we continue to come up with and, um, you know, we didn't even know we had the chicken permit thing until I found it. And again, the code enforcement officer is the one that put all that. I would assume the code enforcement officer and Becky put it together. So we found all that stuff, um, that was in fact done. And it was just a matter of, again, for us to locate it, but we didn't know where to look because they were gone. Um, so I do believe that there's plenty of things for them to do, but it may not be code enforcement. It may be more planning and zoning. So I think that would be the biggest way to say that. And as long as everybody was okay with that, um, I mean, I would be fine with it. And, and yeah, I mean, it's, I don't believe we need too many people. I mean, once you start getting into, we already saw, Diane, I, we already saw all of the, um, financials of where we're gonna be a couple of years from now. And that makes me nervous doing, you know, thinking that we could just hire two or three new people to, you know, to.
Oh, you know, that, that, that is where David, I just wanted to correct what, what David was saying, that we don't have much involvement in staffing. I would, I wouldn't phrase it that way. Because, you know, when, if you wanna, anytime you want a new position, I'm gonna be pushing back on that.
I agree.
Because a lot of our residents just, you know, I still remember hearing a lot of, I think we're already quote overstaffed. I mean, people have unrealistic expectations about the staffing. But, but the fact is, is that that is one of those hot buttons, you know, they've added another employee, oh my gosh, you know, our taxes, da-da-da, and it starts, starts the whole ball rolling. So I don't mean to say I, I don't care if we're adding a brand-new position. I do care about that. Great monkey.
I have a question, uh, for you, Mayor Hughes. If we're talking about a person that, and we have need for a person that, that does clerk duties for the court, then there's administrative, uh, duties for, uh, for the chief executive, which is you. Then we're talking about, uh, a code enforcement officer. Then there's all this compliance paperwork afterward, which is clerk type of, uh, work. And then we're talking about zoning and planning. Wouldn't it make more sense if we were to combine these things to that, uh, Leah would have, uh, an assistant? And that person could, you know, serve in all these functions.
Well, I think that's.
Minute, minute, minute writing also.
Right. I think that's kinda where Tony was going with it. Is it better to have, you know, that's why he's asking, is it better to have two part-time people or one full-time person? And I think that really ultimately is back to the same thing, because Diane, I, I'm, I'm just gonna say this. Yes, in, in one word, in one sentence, I heard, I'm gonna push back if you want an additional person. But in the same sense, you said it's up to the administration. I need to tell you guys kinda what I want. So, you know, I kinda see that as going two different ways. So I have the ability to ask for it, but I may not be given. That's what I think this, this meeting, um, at the end of the day.
No, I, I, for me, uh, let, let me clarify further, is that I, I expect, I don't expect you to come to say I need another person. I would expect you to come say another person because of this. And by the way, uh, I've already checked with Kim and, uh, this is what it would make the finances look like. And this is what it'll cost us at the end of the year, yada, yada. Then I can make it then, okay. I'm, I'm comfortable, but just coming in and saying I need another person and that doesn't.
Right. And, and I guess I'm gonna throw back to you guys. This is your guys' conversation, not mine. In a perfect world, having at least a full-time person would be great. I'm gonna tell you, I don't know finding, uh, and looking at the finances that we had not too long ago, it doesn't make me that excited about paying an insurance and all of that, but that doesn't help our situation right now. So I, I go back to the same thing. This wasn't my conversation that we started. This was your guys'. Um, so, you know, if you guys are willing to pay a full-time person with benefits and all of that, would it help? Yeah, it's definitely gonna help. But at the end of the day, I'm not the person asking for it. I'm telling you, we are having a difficult time finding a code enforcement officer. I will tell you that if I don't have somebody by, I do have somebody that's interested, that doesn't necessarily have the qualifications, but I believe would, um, do everything, everything he possibly, he lives in the village. Um, if he would still be interested in the job, I would reach out to him and at least find out if he has interest in at least temporary, um, until we found somebody else that at least can write letters and drive around the village and do that kinda stuff. I mean, that's literally where I'm at. Um, finding, you know, finding good people out there right now has. Um, finding, you know, finding good people out there right now has been very difficult. I, I'm, I, I, I have my theories as to why, and it doesn't matter. It's been difficult. So I'm gonna go back to this, your guys' conversation, you guys are the ones that can change um, this to a full-time position. If that's what you believe that we should have. I would take a full-time person with benefits, clearly, because I think that that opens up the pool. Um, am I asking for it? No. Um, I, at this point in time, I mean, a part-time code enforcement officer is what we've gotten, what we've done. It's not been working in the past. I don't, it's not gonna work any better now, today. Um, but we also have to look at the village finances. And I saw the village finances the other day, and I already saw that Kim was nervous on some of the things, and that's without doing the things that we want to do. Um, that's without things coming up here and there. So I'm just gonna say that, you know, you're, a full-time person's gonna cost you another thirty thousand dollars a year, or maybe more.
I have a question. If the full-time person were to be a person, you know, with uh, expertise and, and qualifications along the clerk area. And they were to be a full-time employee uh, through the mayor's office. Then would, would they not have plenty to do on a full-time basis?
There is so much stuff that can be done in there. I mean, i- it's unbelievable. I mean.
That would make more sense to me to have a full-time person there.
Right, and, and I think it's still.
Full-time job out of the code enforcement.
Right, it's just a matter of, i- it's gonna cost the village quite a bit more money. I mean, you are, I. Yes, there's, there's plenty to do. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it.
Residents were asking me about it, a, a full-time person with all that there is to do in your office. Which would be quite justifiable, or more justifiable, it seems to me, than to try and stretch uh, code enforcement officer's job.
Here's how I'm gonna say this, I don't know that any of us can know what is going to happen over the next six months. We have taken over two hundred and fifty new houses with more complaints, more. Um, and I'm saying more residents coming in to complain. Obviously violations, uh, we see them every day. I had somebody email me today about some, some violations that, you know, that she's concerned about. We get them all the time. We don't know what it's gonna look like. We don't know how many permits we're gonna have. We know that there's two hundred and fifty new houses. I mean, obviously, it's gonna be a lot more and a lot more work. And that's what happens when you take over a whole nother neighborhood. I mean, we've essentially in, inherited a whole new neighborhood. So to think that we're gonna, we can continue to operate the way that we've been operating is difficult. But again, I, I also saw what our numbers look like, and that doesn't make me excited about trying to overextend ourselves. So I'll have a good answer for you. I mean, again, I go back to the same thing, a, a full-time person I think would be amazing.
That's where I'm at too as well. I think we could attract a better, higher-quality pool that way. But I, I'm cognizant of finances as well.
And that said, you guys are the ones that have to approve it. I can get you the legislation and do all of that, but if you guys aren't on board. Then I'm going to continue to move forward and find the best person that we can for the village. Um, and continue to do exactly what we've been doing. I mean, yeah, in a perfect world, I would say, yeah, I want this, this, this. It's, it's not the perfect world, especially right now. We don't even know what the numbers are gonna look like with COVID and all that stuff over the next year, or last year. We still don't have those numbers.
I'll just say, I'd like to look into this a little more, but it would certainly makes more sense to me that if we were adding a full-time person. Then it would be uh, someone to handle the overload and the uh, uh, in, you know, the mayor's office. And uh, through the administrative duties.
And then the next question is, you know.
Well, the other part of it is, there's a lot of legal stuff to issuing citations and orders and the follow-up. It's, you know, there's criminal and civil liabilities to it, so there's some technicalities in that.
So I, I think where we're at now is to understand the financial impact of whatever route we may go. And so the question would be, do we want to offload this to the finance committee? To socialize that question with the fiscal officer and come back to council with that information? Or do we want to just from this work session, ask the mayor uh, to get with the fiscal officer to make that projection? And then bring it back to us at a, at a future work session?
And I have.
Would be nice to know what it costs.
I mean, that, that sounds reasonable. Right, so why don't we, why don't we make that the takeaway, Mayor Hughes? If you could um, ask the fiscal officer to project what it would look like. Um, you know, and I guess sort of, uh, you know, if we're, if we're just still sort of dreaming sort of both scenarios, right? Uh, a full-time, a full-time uh, code enforcement officer. And, and another part-time person in the office to, to support these additional administrative tasks that we've, we've dreamt up. Or um, you know, all of those different.
A full-time code enforcement, we don't need anyone else. Um, I don't think we need a, a clerk of council and a full-time code enforcement would do the cloak of, the clerk of. Cause they're full-time, so they have half their time doing stuff, half their time doing freight paperwork. And then can also do some of that other stuff to round out their day, knowing that in certain months, they're gonna be too busy. Doing out and about stuff to sort, and they're gonna sort of lose some of their other duties a bit. And then have to pick up the slack once that's all over.
If that's, Diane, you're on mute.
I, I think, um, I just think if Kim's going to do the exercise, she should probably do a couple of different scenarios.
Yeah, so we should just lay out.
And take them out and, and look at how the numbers change.
And you want Kim and I to?
Well, Kim needs to, if, if you don't have time there and you want. I mean, if you want, okay, so.
I was saying something. Do you want Kim and I to look at similar municipalities and see exactly what they are? And I can, I obviously get with a couple different for the actual pay for code enforcement officer. Do you guys wanna have that discussion? Do you want me to base it on the current?
I, I think that, uh, I, I think if you, um. It'd be nice to have uh, villages versus cities in terms of uh, trying to go for something. Or have a city compared to a village, so you know how much, if there, what the differences are. But um, that's kinda like the, it's kinda like the uh, old village. The, the village administrator versus the city administrator, when we were having that discussion during the charter. Um, you know, a village administrator is, you know, is not a hundred thousand dollars, but, but certainly some. Want to be closer to that, so just be realistic from that point of view.
Right, but I think we also have to be realistic, and that's, again, that's why I'm not sure which way this is gonna work. Because being realistic about all of the people that we're competing with around here, why would you take this job over this job when it's?
Yeah, you'd probably take this job if it, if it was gonna be closer to home, if there was more flexibility. You might be wanting to be, uh, you might be wanting a smaller environment, rather than being one person in a big. You might like the fact that we're only uh, one square mile versus uh, traveling all over the place for a large city. There's lots of reasons to like this. It's not all bad. It's not all bad.
You know, it's not, but when you, again, when you already have a really small pool of people that you're trying to. And again, I just, I, I wanna be realistic that when we start looking for a code enforcement officer, it's not gonna pay thirty thousand dollars a year. A- again, you can give as many benefits as you want, but most people can't live on, you know, X amount of dollars. So, you know, I already saw some of the code enforcement officer positions. And they were as much as our, our, some of our highest-paid people. And I don't know how we're gonna compete with that, I guess is where I'm going, so.
We're not, I, I, I think.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna get those people.
Exactly, so again, then we're, we're back to the same discussion. Your, your, your pool is so small that it. It's gonna, it doesn't.
Time, you're gonna get better. I think at this point, we could just look at the um. The finances of it. We know what we're doing now doesn't work. What we try might not work either, but we know what we're doing now doesn't work, so. It puts you to where you have to just do it.
My comment would be if, if uh, e- even if we have to struggle some more with the uh, idea of a part-time. A code enforcement officer, seems to me the majority of the work isn't what we're talking about in all these other clerical areas.
Right.
Uh, that a full-time person would make more sense, you know, to be uh, doing all these other functions. We could still try and deal with how to deal with the uh, code enforcement part of it. But once a citation or an order is issued, there's a massive amount of paperwork afterward.
Right.
So.
No, it's.
And all the follow-up work.
Here's how I'm gonna present this to Kim, and you guys can tell me if I'm, if you don't want me to do it this way, but here's how I plan on presenting it for her. Um, a part-time code enforcement officer as is, that, that's not gonna change. Um, but then hiring basically a zoning clerk per se, um, as also a part-time job. Simple as that, up to twenty hours a week, wouldn't be more than twenty hours a week, that's option number one. Option number two, full-time code enforcement officer slash zoning officer. Um, or zoning clerk is how I would probably list it. With benefits and have her run it that way. And then I will actually get with, do a little bit of research on what I believe a code enforcement officer is going to. Um, cost us, and with Kim, we'll kinda go through those numbers and then see. See if we can kinda meet in the middle, get some numbers to you guys, that way you guys can, I'll, if she emails it to me, I'll just forward it to you guys. So you guys have it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I think she knows how to, I mean, you wanna look at it in terms of the financial statement, the financial balance. And uh, so we need to see, to see how that impacts. And then she may, based on that, she may be. Uh, we may be below where we need to be in terms of reserve, and she may need to. If she, if she feels she needs to make recommendations of something that has to give, then she might uh, highlight. Or a couple of things that maybe we would have to forego or reduce the amount we budgeted for. In order to, to offset this ongoing cost. So um, you know, those kinds of things we be, wanna be able to talk about, talk that through.
No, I, yeah, I, I, yeah, I have no problem. Is that exactly, is that, Brian, is that good?
That's what I had envisioned, yep.
Perfect, that's how I'm gonna ask her. Um, I don't, I mean, to be honest, I don't have a preference. I, I do think that it would be great to have Lisa just doing the other stuff and get the other stuff up for her.
Great, uh, then. Then that brings us to the end of everything I had intended to discuss this evening. Uh, did anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up? This is gonna be very brief. Oh, sorry, Mark, go ahead.
We wanna take a moment and talk about the two asphalt with uh, quotes we got forwarded to us today.
Oh yeah, Eric, I forwarded them both, um, all of them, both of the quotes, the two quotes, the one from the MI guy. Um, that had done the path earlier, and then also mine was just some random, actually it wasn't. I got some recommendations from a resident in the village. Um, that's where the second quote came from. It was a recommendation from somebody that's used them, worked with them before, um, so they aren't, you know, both of them, I believe would be good people. As you can see, there wasn't a huge price difference from either one. Um, so I think this is really a roundabout where it's going to run us, because if you look at them, they are pretty similar. Um.
There was no sight map uh, with the paperwork. Is this, is this where the new bridge is? Is this the walkway where the new bridge is?
Yeah, this is literally replacing right in front of the community building. This is not an addition. This is a complete rip-out, tear, put-back. What, Tony?
I said in front of the park, not in front of the community building, but in front of the parking.
And I, I meant to say in front of the lake.
Or the lake, yeah.
Would it be cost-effective to finish?
Or not that far, does it stop at like the bench down at the end, or?
I have it, no, I have it.
Yeah.
All the way to the path.
Would it, would it be more cost-effective to finish the uh, walk path that includes the new bridge over the new spillway along with the job?
That's all brand-new. That was, that part is all perfect. We would actually be.
Well, there's a lot of temporary lighting and electric there.
What's that?
There's temporary lighting and electric there. On the new, on the path with the MI put in across the uh, earth dam and the new spillway.
There's no lighting, there's no electric over there.
Well, they, they have some temporary high-pressure sodium and mercury lights hanging on poles over.
Oh yeah, those, no, um, I thought you meant just actual. So those, that path is actually not that old, um, and to me, it's in decently good shape. So our path would be, we would start exactly where they ended their path. And we would go all the way down in front of the bench, all the way in front of all of the cars, all the way down to meet to. The police officer lot, so that path going down that little hill would be done.
Sidewalk out.
What's that?
Yeah, we just finished that whole sidewalk.
There's no plan to put pathway lighting in on, on, as part of that.
So I mean, all of that would be up for debate. At this point, the only thing that I'm concerned about is getting all of the, to get that flat. To make that safe for kids to be able to ride their bikes and wheelchairs and all that kinda stuff. Make it a little bit thicker, then wider, thicker, wider, um, make it a little bit wider. So um, you could actually have more than one person walk at a time through there, cause some of those are pretty thin. So that's kind of where that is. Um, we would have appropriation, we'd have to get it all approved. I would love, um, and uh, in complete honesty, unless you guys tell me, absolutely never gonna happen. I would love to, whether or not we pick one, um, but I would love to at least start the first readings next week. Um, plan on next week having a crap-ton of new legislation. Um, we have the new police cruiser coming, so we're gonna be selling the old one. There's gonna be legislation for that, we already have a buyer for it. Um, meaning kinda like we did the last time, we were given the estimate from the bidding place or whatever. Um, and we've already got somebody that's willing to pay it. Um. And then you're gonna have to do like the paving assessment legislation, you're gonna have flow lines legislation. You're gonna have a whole bunch of legislation next week. So this is one that I would love to have first reading on next week.
I have another question. Uh, the, there's repeated and constant complaints about the speeding going down there. And when people walk across what is the causeway between the two lakes is where the big complaint is. Where people told me they've almost been hit. Does, does this new sidewalk, that, this would incorporate some sort of solution to that, wouldn't it?
The causeway between the two lakes, I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, yeah. The pipe goes underneath Minerva Lake Road to South Lake from North Lake. In that area, when people are walking, the speeders, I've had lots of complaints with people, so they've almost been hit by people going really fast down there. And we've, that's been a discussion or meetings before, but wouldn't the new path would uh, provide some relief to that?
It's not a new path, it's a replacement of a path that's already there.
Right.
I will say, a lot of people do walk in the street around that particular area, and the only thing I can tell them is to walk on the path. And right now, maybe they're not walking on the path.
That's my, that's my point.
Yeah, it, it should get more people to walk on the path, but right now it's so wobbly-jobbly that it's, it's a sprained ankle waiting to happen. So I, it might help get people onto the path.
That helps solve this other problem as well, is my point.
Yes, it really might.
Pick one.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys, uh, Mark, it looks like you, you did actually look at them. Do you have any um, pros, cons, which one?
Um, I think the one was a little more expensive, but it looks like they were doing two and a half inches of asphalt. And sort of just two inch, and it's my understanding that the thicker the roadway is, the longer it lasts. And the better it is. I could be wrong with that, but that is my understanding.
Mark, it has a lot to do with what's underneath it. I think I saw in my, the short time I had to look at that. That there was a gravel base underneath it, is there not?
There's a gravel base under.
Well, that, that has a lot more to do with, you know, the longevity of the asphalt than.
Well, with that being said, I'd go with the two and a half inch person.
Yeah, with a base under.
Oh, were they, and were they both quoting the same extra wide, the seven?
The, the one gentleman for, for MI was quoting a proper wide path. The other gentleman was quoting a slightly thinner path. Otherwise, had he quoted the one that was anywhere between five and seven feet, he probably would have been equal to the MI gentleman. They're, they're that close. I, I, it's really an apples-to-apples comparison.
Diane, can you answer one thing for me before, just, just so everybody can have this? If we do it seven foot wide, that is going to require, correct me if I'm wrong, that is going to require some of those trees to come out. Is that correct?
So this is what I'll say, we can do anywhere between five and eight feet, okay? If you get above, we have to measure it. If you get above six, I think you're cutting at least one of those three trees. Those little pines kinda trees that are up by the path that you go from west to east towards the uh, regular path. I think, you know, we'll just measure it out.
Okay, I just wanna point that out, because everybody knows that, like, to me, a wide, clear, nice path is great. But I also know that as soon as we cut one tree down, why didn't you do this? But I also know that as soon as we cut one tree down, why didn't you do this? So I'm, I, I, just for mere pointing out purposes.
And then the trees are, whatever trees they cut would be an extra cost, but those should be pretty simple trees to cut. And I, I think the most important part is to have the wide path at this point. Um, and not that path, the roots coming up a year from now and buckling it again. So.
If there's technically a bike lane, and I might wanna look at what the uh, you know, what the regulations are on that, but. Uh, the width would seem to me, if you're having traffic. I, I, other places, when they put in bike lanes or walking paths, sometimes they have wider ones that are divided, you know, where you have a. Uh, two-way kind of thing, where two wheelchairs can go both directions, but that would be, that seems to me, we don't have room.
Well, when, if it's connecting to a path that's not as wide, so you wanted to make it look. As least obvious as possible, but, you know.
My thought was, I would prefer it to come directly from the MI where it stops, and ours like goes in. I would just prefer it to be that thick all the way down, all the way to. However wide that is. And Eric, I don't know if you remember, if it was five, six, or seven, but wherever that, however wide that path is, that was perfect.
It's not very, right, no.
Yeah, it definitely should have uniformity, I would think.
Right. Since it's just that, since it's just a connector, basically. I mean, I feel like that's. I feel like that's the way it needs to, that's my vision, I think, at that point.
Well, this is what is envisioned for the new community center also, right? That this would coordinate into that.
Yeah, this is not touched in the diagrams that we have, so this is something that, um, it, this wouldn't affect anything over there. So getting this project done does not affect anything. It's just a bonus. It'll already be done.
Yeah, oh, my, no, what I'm saying is if we did the new community center, uh, then walkways are gonna be taken into consideration, and this coordinates with that, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So what I will do, Brian, do you have any two cents on this? Are you excited to get it done?
Uh, whatever, yeah, just get it done. I don't care which one you pick, just.
There's, they're five hundred dollars, I think, so, okay. I will have legislation for you guys on Monday. Um, we will go over, Eric and I can kind of on Wednesday. Go over both of them, fine-tooth comb and, you know, just make sure that we're not missing something on one of them, and just move forward with one.
Yeah, I just, I, I always like the one that, that gives you more than you, listen to you and give you more than you asked for. And then that one was definitely took a lot of care in giving you different options, and I, I always think that's, I always think that's a good thing.
Perfect. These are, I, I think the one that you're talking about is, they're the ones that did the rest of the path. So it makes sense to just continue because everything should be the same quality of it. So it would be, it's the same people that did that path.
Yeah, that makes sense then. Just use the, the ones that I assume Eric is referring to as the MI people, cause they're the ones that they used. And that way, it will hopefully level up with the existing path perfectly.
Makes sense to me. Alright, uh, councilperson McNamara, you had had something else you wanted to bring up?
Um, yes, yes, somewhat, I guess grossly related to our business as council. Um, this is the first time that I've ever had the chance to do this, seeing as my original. Um, my original uh, point of being here was appointed. I am, are there any tips or tricks on how to file for reelection that someone would not mind walking me through? Because I assume the deadline for that will be coming up sometime this spring.
Yeah, in August.
Yeah.
Go down on Morse Road to the Board of Elections, they can fill you in on all of it.
Well, you can, you can do, yes, and you can also, there's a lot online you can look at to get, to get you started, but the, the people that, you know, where you can vote early. David, on Morse Road.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the Board of, if you go walk in there and say you want information, and, and when they're having a non-busy day, they're very nice.
Oh, yes, they are.
Basically, you just need to get ten registered voters to sign your petition, so all it takes.
I'm not sure I could scrape up ten.
To file it.
I am certain you can scrape up ten. That's, ten is like. I don't know. If you have trouble scraping up ten, just let me know. Bring your petition over here and I can get it done in an evening.
Exactly. Or show up to Planning and Zoning at the community building, you'll have almost ten people there, so.
There you go.
Well, that'll, that, that is, that, that's appreciated. Thank you, guys. I will.
Well, I mentioned it, David, cause you can drive to the Board of Elections just because of where it is, you know, as quick as you can call them on the phone. They're very nice.
And in my experience, they're more likely to talk to you there in person than on the phone. They are, they are much harder to get on the phone than to walk in and talk.
Oh, yeah. I agree with that, too.
Alright, cool.
Yeah, alright, well then, anybody else have anything else they wanted to bring up, uh, while we're still in this work session?
Newsletter deadline, March twenty-third, Diane?
March twenty-third for the newsletter. Um, if anybody has a, a, an article or, or thought process about an article, or we. Even if you have an idea, don't have a lot of time, you know, if you give me some notes, I could whip something up, but uh. For the newsletter, something coming up.
Upcoming dates, anything like that that anybody has would be awesome. Those are next.
Small little boxes, uh, those always are nice to fit in different places. If you've got little notices, you wanna do something like that, whatever. Okay.
Alright.
Uh, Mayor Hughes, is there anything on the streets that I haven't got to yet, that, that would be going to the newsletter?
No, um, I, I don't know. I know that there, I found out today, there's two potholes. Somebody sent me a message on two potholes, so I'm gonna talk to Brian about that, cause I really hate to bring somebody in for two potholes. So we'll talk about that.
Alright, thank you.
But if you wanna meet like on Wednesday or Friday, we can do that.
I couldn't do it today, so I'll have to do it.
Shoot me a message, shoot me a message and let me know what time, but I'll, I will be in Wednesday, too.
Okay, thank you. Alright, well, then, uh, what I'm hearing is it's time to move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, objections, abstains, alright, everyone?